Welcome to another episode of Municipal Focus. My name is Kevin Tochi and I will be your host for the next 30 minutes, as we try to do with this particular program. Is it better to inform you, the viewer who we serve, and the viewers that we serve in both Whitman and Hanson? And we have a good guest today. A gentleman, usually he takes turns with me, sitting in this chair, but he is under the spotlight today. We have the chairman of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee, Mr. Bob Hayes. Been a while, we had to dust him off and pull him out of the utility closet. Welcome.
Thanks, Toch.
Welcome back. Must be that time for elections and-
It's good to be here.
And town meetings. We were able to bring you out of retirement, or your hibernation.
Well, you know, Toch, it's been a busy, busy year with all that's going on in the regional school district and in-town politics together. I mean, there's some exciting elections coming up in May and there's a lot of things going on. I'm sure we'll be interviewing some candidates for different positions. There's five people running for the Board of Selectmen, but I know you want to talk about schools, so get at it.
I want to talk about school stuff. I know you want to kind of hijack the program and take it over, but that's okay. Reason why we have you here is to talk about everything and then some.
Eric told me, no matter what chair I sit in, we can talk about it, so we're going.
Well, let's start with, you're right, it has been busy for the school district, for the school committee, starting with the amendment, the regional amendment committee, that the amendment agreement committee, that I think they met a couple of times. What was the purpose of that, just so folks who may not know?
Well, Whitman and Hanson, obviously, as you know, regionalized the school systems in around '93, and they had an agreement with the two towns. And every so many years, the agreement is supposed to be updated, or looked at, or changed, because what happens is agreements get old, like Whitman and Hanson have changed some schools. Some of the schools in Whitman have come offline. The school right across the street from the studio was currently in the agreement. Hanson Middle, which was built many, many years ago, wasn't in the agreement, and it was just timed to update. So what the school committee's done is they've created a subcommittee, and we have a couple of me, gentlemen, that have come forward from mass association of school committees and regional agreements, a couple of really good guys, and they've come to kind of guide us along the path and make sure that we're not doing anything that we shouldn't be doing. But basically, we're updating the regional agreement. But it's really a lengthy process, because when you start by updating a regional agreement, you have to make all of the changes to update it to the 2017 language, and then, once you update it to 2017 or 2018, we started in '17 doing this, then you have to bring it to the school committee to be voted for the changes, and then it has to go to both Boards of Selectmen for agreement, then it has to go to the town meeting to be agreed on, and then eventually, it has to go to the Department of Education and Secondary Education, in all different phases of how you're changing anything, to make sure that everybody is happy with the agreement. Now, most of what you're going to see in the changes in the agreement are schools, school names, how it happened. I'm assuming the assessments are all going to say pretty much the same. The votes are the same, because the regional agreement states currently on a 60-40 vote, meaning six members from Whitman, four members from Hanson, because it's perfect to the fact of 60% of the students are from Whitman, 40% are from Hanson. So, you know, on that category, being in that break-in, breaking it up like that, six to four.
Do you anticipate any kind of conversation from folks in Hanson in regards to the shares? Not so much that there's what the split is in student population, but anybody who follows what goes on in town government knows that some folks may not be all that happy or all that enamored with the fact that it's not an evenly split board, but that there's more of a majority for Whitman than Hanson, and some folks may not understand the whole dynamic to that, or may not want that to be consistent with the splitting students.
Well, I think, I've heard maybe one or two people say that, but I think it's important to note, when you have a 60-40 split like we have, and you have a 60-40 population, that by 60-40, the town of Whitman pays 60% of the regional agreement on the assessment, the town of Hanson pays 40%. So although the town of Hanson may want five voters, I don't think they want to pay 50-50. And I'm just guessing, nobody wants to pay more, Toch.
That's correct.
Everybody wants to pay less.
That's correct, yeah.
So no, I don't think that there's really, verbally, there may be a few people, and anyone that's watching, this is one of the reasons Kevin and I do these shows. If you have anything that you'd like to say, or come to a regional committee meeting and talk about this assessment change, or talk about any assessment change, because I'm not saying there's going to be one, or you want to talk about any of the regional agreement changes, come to school committee meetings. They're posted on the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District website, and the regional agreement committee meetings are posted on the website. Please come and give us your input, because basically, the committee doesn't know, or the subcommittee doesn't know, what anyone in town wants unless they come and give their input. It's very important, if you want to be involved with your school district, or local town government, come to town meetings, come and give your input, and have your vote counted, so to speak. So many people say, "I don't have a voice in government." Unfortunately, you have to come forward, you have to be prepared to speak, and a lot of people do, but it'd be great. I mean, we just had a town meeting a week or two ago, and I hate to date a show, but out of 6,000 registered voters in Hanson, we had 158 people come to town meeting.
But you know what the better part of that was? It only lasted less than 20 minutes.
It was 14 minutes, I believe, or 15.
It was about 15-15. That's according to our numbers, which is fantastic. And I just want to throw it out to the voters, folks who are watching, is there are many ways for you to get educated and informed, as these programs, anytime there's a committee meeting, whether it's a school committee meeting, whether it's the regional amendment agreement committee, I gotta look at the sheet, because it's such a long name, but these air on Educational Channel 98 on a regular basis, and they're available on our YouTube channel. All you gotta do is if you go on YouTube, search for WHCA, the number 9, TV, and you'll be able, you'll be right into our library of videos that we have available, and you'll be able to get yourself up to speed with these meetings and the discussions. One of the other discussions that's ongoing, and I know that there's been meetings, is that Dr. Ruth Gilbert-Witner has announced not too long ago that she is, she's going to retire.
Yes, the superintendent, the current superintendent, is planning on retiring at the end of this coming school year, and right as we speak, the committee is in the midst of interviewing candidates for possible, to become the next superintendent here in the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District.
What kind of a process is that, for folks who don't understand?
Well, it starts out, Kevin, with an appointed committee with a search committee, and there were quite a few people on the search committee. There was students, there was faculty, there was-
At-large members.
-school committee members, there was at-large members, and with that committee, you have to be careful not to have a quorum of members, because any vote that would be taken would be considered accepted. So the committee starts out, and had several candidates, and whittled it down to three candidates, and currently, the three candidates are, there's been site visits, it's part of the process, to go to their site and see what the people that they work with think of them, and interview them, and see, and then there's going to be a final picking of a candidate. The street gets down to three right now, at a school committee meeting, in an open meeting, everything is done, so anybody can come, sit in the gallery, listen, watch on cable, I know you guys come, and video all of the, all of the school committee meetings, so people can get an idea of what's going on. I think it's important.
I just want you to know, it's hard work to make you look good.
I know.
No, you're the chair. Ryan has to do some extra work and color correction to make you look good.
Is it the bald head or the red sweater?
No, it's the nose.
There you go.
So, how do you feel the search has been going? I mean, because this is important, the next person who comes in here, whether it's somebody who's coming in here, or if it's somebody who's within the system, is, their charge is to the betterment of the school district for the foreseeable future.
Exactly. It's, the picking of a superintendent is like picking a CEO of a $50 million company. And it's very, very important that you have a superintendent that is strong, strong in child-centered-based learning education. They have to have budget strengths, because as I just said, it's a $50 million budget. They have to have people skills. We have six schools now that are up and, well, we have seven, but soon to be six schools that are up and running. So there's a lot on the day-to-day job of a superintendent. As you know, we've interviewed some of the superintendents, and it's, it's a go-all-day job, and then it's go to the events at night, and there's a lot that goes on with it. It's a big job, and it's a huge job for all the people that have children in the district. I mean, education is a major function in the two towns of Whitman and Hanson, and I think everyone in both communities wants their children to get the best education possible.
You just mentioned a special town meeting, and it wasn't too long ago that Hanson held their own special town meeting. One of them was in regards to the McQuan School, Hanson's share of monies to move the pre-K program from one, from one part of the district to the high school now. We know that Whitman is going to be having, they got an upcoming town meeting, to vote their share of the money for the pre-K. What was it like for, at least the Hanson side of things? Give me your assessment.
Well, there's a lot to do, Kevin, when you start moving students and faculty from building to building, and downsizing into different buildings. If you take the McQuan offline, which was the vote to do, you have to move that group of students from McQuan, where do they go? So some of those age group children are going to Indian Head, to programs at Indian Head, and some of them are going to the high school for the pre-K program. So there is costs involved with doing the moves, because you have to make remodeling changes, you have to do all types of different things, and then they'll be moving the fifth grade to Hanson Middle School. So without the breakdown of it directly in front of me, as you say, we don't have the paperwork, it's approximately 555,000 to the town of Hanson for all of these moves, but a long-term saving of closing a building is huge, especially with what's going on with McQuan, and the repairs that it's needed, and the repairs that it needs to continue to function.
Yeah, what happens with the McQuan? Is this something that it's taken offline, and there's another decision, whether it's something that will stay in the district, or if it will be re-purposed?
Well, it's funny you should ask that. There's a reuse committee that's been in panel to take a look at what the reuses might be for the McQuan School. I'm on it, I've been asked to be on it, and the town administrator and some of the selectmen, I believe there are people at large on it, to determine if there is a reuse from McQuan School. Because as you know, if you look all over the United States, but even in Massachusetts, there are tremendous amounts of schools. I mean, there's an old school in East Washington Street in Hanson that's been boarded up for many years, it used to be a preschool, and it's just, old use for school buildings is difficult because of the remodeling fact. When these schools were built, no one knew that asbestos and all kinds of contaminants were involved, so remodeling them is very cost, not cost-effective, or very costly. So some of that comes into play. I would love to see a good reuse that could put the McQuan School on the tax rolls for the town of Hanson, it'd be awesome.
Okay, definitely good to know. Governor recently released his 2019 budget House, House One, the House One budget, of course, and will anticipate House Two and Three, which would be the House Representatives and the State Senate, as they put forth their versions. Have you seen anything in the governor's version that, you know, concerns you, or at least it makes you, it satisfies you to know that the school district is going to, is going to be able to get enough funding to be able to take care of the children in the district for fiscal '19?
Well, Kevin, what happens when the budgets come out? It's the beginning of the process when you're up at the State House. That budget is going to change dramatically, so to be perfectly honest, looking at the beginning of it, everybody starts lobbying the state reps on what they want done. It's really in its infancy up there at the State House, because it's going to change a whole bunch of times, and then it's going to get down to the end.
Conference committee, right?
Right, to really wrangle it around and get real nervous in the beginning. After you've been doing this for a long time, you understand that the opening shot has been fired, so to speak, in February, and it's going to change.
Right, but here's the thing, though, is when both communities, Whitman and Hanson, go to town meeting, the budget process is nowhere near complete. It's usually not completed until, well, the past couple of years, until, you know, the first or second week of July, where they gotta do, you know, a temporary budget until everybody can be on the same page, and the governor finally signs it into law. I'm sure you've got some kind of a peek at the cherry sheets, or had conversations. Last year was an interesting year, because the school districts, their annual assessment, you know, they, there was a vision. Well, you and I had that discussion, where it was, the amount was higher, the percentage for the annual assessment was a little bit higher, because the school district's trying to move in the right direction.
Well, again, the towns have been very good last year, they were, they were very good in supporting schools, and they've supported schools for years and years and years. I mean, sometimes the money just isn't there, Kevin, and it's not like, towns and state government are like the federal government, where they just keep printing more.
Right.
Towns and state governments have to balance their books somehow, and come up with a way of financing, whether it's education, whether it's, you know, people will say, "This guy salted the road too much, this guy didn't salt it enough," and all comes at a cost.
Sure.
And it, and it's played out in the tax bill. And with Prop 2 and 1/2, which means property taxes can only go up 2 and 1/2% per year, it's capped. It's very difficult for a lot of these departments to operate under that cap, especially departments like School Department, that is labor intense. You know, a lot of our budget is the cost of what the labor is. So it, it's difficult.
There was a conversation towards the end of last year, right around town meeting, and there was going to be a conversation about getting things together, to have a conversation, so instead of kicking the can down the road when it comes to finances, that when it came to this time of year, that the school district and the municipalities would be ready to move forward, they would have a game plan in place. Where do they stand in regards to that?
Basically, it started a little bit earlier this year, but again, it all hinges on that massive figure that the governor's budget finally comes out with, that becomes the true figure. Because if you, it's kind of like banking on something you can't spend yet, and if it doesn't come out, it's very difficult. Both towns have been prepared, both towns of Whitman and Hanson have strong, strong financial people, whether it be the finance committees, town administrators, they have real strength, they're very good at doing budgets, and they really come up with honest, true, hard figures. They're right now working at it, we're meeting with Hanson Finance Committee, we've been meeting with Whitman Finance Committee, and as I said, they're strong. They don't spend money where money's not needed to spend, they keep everything in check. You've got some real good department heads, whether it's Police Department, Fire Department, in Whitman, there's a DPW in Hanson, it's called the Highway Department, and all of those guys are pretty good, pretty budget-conscious guys, that really, really put a tremendous amount of time into it, and the money gets shared pretty equally. I mean, I know there's times people say this and that, and those and these, it's difficult putting a budget together, and as it is with the school. If you watch us put the budget, it just got unveiled at the last school committee meeting, it's difficult, because there are things that need to be put back into the budget for education.
You started out the program teasing the fact that we're, you know, right around the corner, is, it's Bob's favorite time of year. Bob gets to sit in this seat, and I also take turns sitting in this seat, as we talk to people who are seeking office, whether they're running for school committee, whether they're running for selectmen. I think this year, Whitman has a town clerk's race.
They do.
They do. So give me your thoughts on, on the upcoming elections. Again, I know it's, it's like Christmas for you.
Well, it's funny, the upcoming race in Whitman, I wasn't sure if the town clerk actually had a race going. Do you know who the candidates are?
I do not. I do not.
I heard that there was a race, but I hadn't heard who the candidate was, so I mean, that's, that's TBA, to be announced?
Yeah, yeah, or TBD.
Yeah, to be determined, yeah. Well, what about, I don't believe there's any selectmen's race in Whitman.
Well, Dan Salvucci is up. I know Dan's already kind of put the word out there-
I think Dan took his paper.
-on social media, saying he fully intends on, he's looking forward to making another run at it. Dan's very passionate about what he does, serves as a liaison on many boards and committees as an extension of the Board of Selectmen to, you know, in Whitman's best interest. I don't know who's running, if there's anybody running against him at this particular time. He may be the only name on the ballot at this particular time.
I, again, I'm not sure either. I know Dan's a very, very hard worker for the town of Whitman, and he supports schools. I know in Hanson, though, we have five people running for two seats. You have Jim McGann's running for reelection, Mr. Howard is running for reelection, then you have a newcomer, Wes Bloss, previous teacher in the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, he's running. You have another young gentleman, young blood, 25 or 6 years old, I haven't met him yet, I guess it's Matt Dyer.
Okay.
He's running, and you have another gentleman, Joe Weeks, running, so you have-
You know Joe.
Yeah, you have five people.
Joe, I think, is on the, is he planning board? Is he chair of the planning board?
I believe so. Joe's been on Planning Board, I think he's been on Housing Authority, you know, he's no stranger to it.
And he's been on the hot seat a few times, too. He was, I would say, last year or the year before, it might have been last year, that he was here in the studio when we did election coverage. In the past couple of years, Joe has run for selectmen.
I believe he has. I think we did a debate here one time with four of them that were running for selectmen, and I think Joe was one of them, so. But yeah, that should prove interesting, there's five people running for two seats, and you've heard me say many times, Kevin, it's great for the people to have choices. So five people running, and there's rumor that there's a sixth person running, and again, this person said, "You'll hear, you'll hear when they sign up." I'm like, "Okay, well, it's good." I mean, I'd be looking forward to having them all on, because I think it's an opportunity. I mean, you've got five people running for two seats on the Board of Selectmen.
What's even more intriguing, we'll throw it out there, and we're going to go, we'll ascend a little bit higher than the local town races, open seat for the state representative, partially for the town of Whitman, it's a 7th Plymouth District. Jeff Deal, Representative Jeff Deal, is running for Congress, actually for Senate.
State Senate?
No, US Senate.
Yeah.
Both run, US Senate, running.
There you go.
Hoping to be, he's hoping to be the Republican nominee to face off against Elizabeth Warren, who is the senior senator serving down in, down in our nation's capital. So he's not running. So you have, right now, three people that we know of, two Democrats, Kevin Higgins, Alex Bazanson, and Peter Drosoz. Now, Kevin and Alex are Dem, Democrats. Peter, of course, known from his family that owns Venus, Venus Cafe. Peter, running as a Republican, Peter Drosoz.
That should be an interesting race. I know that Mr. Bazanson is an Abington resident.
Yep.
I'm not sure where the other candidate is from.
I think, I think-
Because that's East Bridgewater, Abington-
Yep.
And Whitman.
Yep, it's most of East Bridgewater, all of Whitman, all of Abington.
Yeah, it just touches, because isn't Michelle Dubois part of, have part of East Bridgewater with the Brockton?
One precinct.
One precinct of EB.
Yes.
That's kind of crazy with the way that that comes about. East Bridgewater's just a small town.
Yeah, but you're talking, the guy who covers the, I follow them, I'm an avid follower of the politics and what goes on, and knowing that a couple of years ago, when it was an open seat, Christine Cannavale had stepped away from the seat, and so basically, it was a free-for-all, and watching the poll numbers come in, at the time, John Cruz, who is the brother of the district attorney, Tim Cruz, and I believe that John Cruz actually, for one term, held the 10th Plymouth District State Rep seat.
I think he did.
And then Christine unseated him. It was interesting that John was back in the running, he was up by, I want to say, between 14 and 1,600 votes. These were the numbers that were in from West Bridgewater and East Bridgewater, and still pending were the numbers for Brockton. And when the Brockton numbers came in, Michelle Dubois was no problem.
Well, that's the unfortunate part about Brockton. Brockton is the wild card in all those races, something that I believe Deal ran far before.
Yeah, against Mike Brady.
He won every single town except the city of Brockton, and then it was a landslide once of Brockton, I'm just kidding.
Well, a part of the debate was because, let's not forget, that Senator Tom Kennedy had passed away, so this was a special election to fill that seat, and so what they, what the Elections Commission in Brockton did was they, they had to set a date, and it so happens that the city elections were taking place right around that time, so they scheduled it for the election. So it's thought to believe, it's believed that the State Senator kind of got a bump, because people were going out for one reason, and go, "Oh, I'll vote for this, too."
Well, they were calling that election gate, kind of like the flight gate. You know, that was a scam fix job, and the fix was in. We heard all those stories.
Timing, it was timing, but the thing was, is that if Representative Deal didn't get out in, at that time, and make the push, that was part of the problem, was getting out, making the push, he wasn't going to win Brockton, because it's a Democratic stronghold. But what he needed to do is at least do better than 40-45%, or at least somehow break even, which is nearly impossible.
It's very tough with the city of Brockton, especially, like I said, East Bridgewater should be all alone in EB, there should be no Brockton touch to that, there shouldn't be a precinct. But I mean, I'm not pushing it one way or the other for Brady or for Deal, what I'm saying is, the city of Brockton should stand on its own. It really should. It shouldn't have any of East Bridgewater with it.
Now, it's been a while since we've dusted you off to do a show. We've got less than three minutes left here. If folks want to mobilize and get you sitting in this seat right here to talk about any issue, how can they do that?
Well, there's a couple of ways you can get ahold of me. My email address is bobhayes4433@gmail.com, or you can call me on my cellphone at 617-538-0189. If you have any school issues, or anything that you would like to do, or if you have anything, anything you would maybe like to come on a show to talk about, or if you have any suggestions for a show, you and I are always open to talk, Kevin, so you can call me on my phone, or get me by my email address, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Maybe when, when we have you back on, we can find out who some of the school committee members that are going to be vying for reelection, or who, now, who do you, do you know exactly who will be up on your committee right now?
In Whitman?
Yeah. Is it Kevin?
It's Kevin Lineham.
Yep.
And Fred Small.
Okay.
And in Hanson, it's me.
Really?
Yes.
Wow, who knew?
Exactly.
Oh, and have you, have you heard as far as anybody pulled papers yet?
I really haven't heard anything about Whitman. I know that, I believe Fred and Kevin are both running for reelection.
Okay.
I don't know if they pulled papers or turned them in yet. I pulled papers for reelection. There's rumors that there were other people in both towns running, but as of yet, I haven't, I haven't heard of any newcomers yet.
Well, we want to thank you so much for coming in.
Kevin, thanks for having me on.
And updating, yes, we'll have you on once the new superintendent is chosen, so we'll stay tuned for that. And we thank you for tuning in, and again, as Bob gave you his information, he hosts a show called Bring It On. We're always looking for reasons to sit down in the studio and put the, point the cameras on Bob, and whoever his guest may be. Same thing with this, this cable station. If you have an idea for any of the shows, whether it's Bring It On, Crosstalk, Municipal Focus, drop me a line at ktocci@whca.tv, or info@whca.tv. Well, that's all the time that we have. Until next time, have a great day.